Okay. Welcome, everybody, to the August 16th, 2023 City v. Edina Planning Commission Meeting. How's everyone doing today?
Good.
Good?
Good.
Great. Appreciate everyone who is here in attendance and those tuning in remotely, I say it every time, but your curiosity, your participation, and certainly your feedback, cue Janie Weston in the back, is instrumental as we navigate change here together in Edina specifically regarding the ways in which people would like to use their land. On that note, the city is committed to your feedback. Your input matters. We gather it in numerous means, emails, meetings, whatever, but most prominently our engagement website, which is www.bettertogetheredina.org. Every comment that has been submitted anytime we have one of these meetings makes its way to us, and we commit to you that it has been reviewed and will be considered as we make recommendations. So tonight, there is one public hearing. Those who would like to provide testimony remotely can call the following number, 786-496-5601, and enter conference PIN 5347981, and then press *1 when you're ready to jump in the queue to speak. We'll give you some more details when we get right up to that, which will be soon. An operator will let you know when it's your turn. If you have provided feedback or any input, you don't need to share it tonight, but if you're here and you would like to do so, we welcome you to do that. So, without further ado, we're going to get right into the meeting. So call this meeting to order. And then we'll do roll call.
Commissioner Felton.
Here.
Commissioner Padilla.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner who?
Here.
Commissioner Day.
Here.
Commissioner Strauss.
Here.
Chair Bennett.
Here. Figured it out. Thanks for the shuffle. Next, we have the approval of tonight's meeting agenda.
Move to approve tonight's agenda. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved. Next, we have the approval of the prior meeting's minutes from July 26.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved. Okay, thank you. So now we move to the community comment period tonight, and this is the portion of the agenda where it is your chance, for those in person, who'd like to speak about a matter that is not on tonight's agenda. Similar to a public hearing, you have three minutes. Just come to one of the podium. When the light turns green, your three minutes begins. Yellow, 30 seconds left. Red, your time's up, and we'll ask you to wrap it up. If anyone is here for community comment, welcome you to the front. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And just provide your name and address.
My name is Robert Rustneck. I live at 6232 Idlewood Lane, Edina, Minnesota. I don't need this. So I am opposed to rezoning a partial of land at 5780 Lincoln Drive. Since zoning and your presence here is a commitment to the community, the city should not violate the zoning code to shoehorn in this project. The zoning code doesn't allow the proposed development on Lincoln Drive, 5780 Lincoln Drive. Even a variance within the PID1 zoning does not allow this project to proceed. The only way for the city to approve this project is to rezone it, or that is spot zone the project, and redesignate it PUD. When residents invest their time, money, life savings in Parkwood Knowles, they rely on the zoning codes to protect their investments. The development would place too many people, 250 to 300 people, in two and a half acres. The developer proposes 100% affordable housing. There's no place for people to be parking in this particular redevelopment project as proposed, and the traffic would be much worse, endangering children, walkers of which I am one, and bikers. Secondly, there's no services in the area that would support 250 to 300 people. There's no public transportation. The neighborhood would support a redevelopment where much-needed services, restaurants, and transportation are available. Example, there is currently a vacant lot that the city owns on the corner of Bren Road and Wilson, the northwest corner. So they would propose, as a change in the developer's idea of where he wants to shoehorn in this project, but not at 5780 Lincoln Drive. And furthermore, 57 Lincoln Drive, the proposed project there, it's not consistent with the architectural character, the symmetry of the neighborhood valued for its park-like essence, including the large lots, many trees, wooded areas, and quiet streets. So do you have any questions for me regarding my comments?
Typically, this isn't an exchange, so we probably do have questions for you, but we will discuss later.
Well, would you like my email address so that you can address any specific questions to me?
If you could email the city, and then this gets to us, and then we can, we would get your contact info.
And what city email would be most appropriate?
You want to just read yours out loud?
Yeah, read yours out loud, and I'll copy it down right now.
Put it on the teleprompter.
Sure, it's public. It's C-T-E-A-G-U-E at...
What, Z-U-E?
It's C-T-E-A-G-U-E. At edinamn.gov.
I'm going to read that after you, sorry.
Sure. Replace the Z with a G.
G-U-E. Okay. I appreciate that.
Certainly.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, well, I guess we can address that now, and then we'll open it up to other community comment, but Kerry, would you like to just speak to how information gets to us, open meeting laws? We can also, like with particular projects that are on the table or are formally applied for information and an exchange of ideas, and that can happen on the engagement website that we shared, too, but maybe you can share so people know we're trying to be transparent here.
Yes, so the project that was referred to here is the sketch plan that you reviewed three, four months ago, maybe two, I lose track of time, but anyway, no formal application has been made. The developer at that time has indicated that they won't be submitting an application anytime soon. The earliest would be early next year. Should they make an application, public hearing notices go out to all property owners within 1,000 feet. The plans get posted on the website and the meeting dates, but you have my email. We can connect over time, and I can give you updates.
And we would certainly rather residents be engaged before things are formally applied for, since we know it's likely coming, and so really appreciate your comments tonight.
I appreciate the opportunity to speak before you.
Thank you. Jerry?
Yeah, for Kerry, that presentation some months ago, an interesting point came up with, they were a tenant in a building, intending that they didn't get notification, the public notification, and the explanation seemed to be the building owner. It's the owner of the building is identified, so maybe, I don't know if that's been addressed, but I know that there were people there saying, "We weren't told that we're tenants of a property that were informed." I thought, I could see where things like that could be.
Right, the notices get sent out to property owners, then it's up to the owner to inform their tenants.
Yeah, and maybe that's clear to them, it's their responsibility, but okay.
Yeah, maybe it's something we can help shepherd a better way, you know? If you're an owner of a multi-tenant facility, there's some extra responsibility to post signage or something. Okay. Do we have anyone else who's here for community comment? All right. Well, you will close the community comment period, and we will move to the next portion, public hearings. We just have one, as mentioned. This is for the zoning ordinance, multifamily housing in the city's PCD1 and PCD2 zoning districts. Just so you know what to expect, a public hearing process, and we got some good feedback from our last couple of meetings from a resident who's tried to engage. As fellow commissioners can recall, we had a couple of late meetings lately, and if there is ideas about how to streamline this process, one of which was, maybe it's you present, then we let the developer present, then we do all of our questions, so there isn't kind of duplicate efforts of questions, answers, et cetera. So we welcome feedback from the residents. That came through an email, so if you have ideas of how to change things, make things better, we can try to do that, but for what to expect tonight, Kerry's going to present. We will ask questions. If there is a different developer or an applicant, then they would present, we would ask questions, but we don't tonight. The city attorney's on for questions as well, and then we will open it to a public hearing, and that's your chance, as a resident, to testify, either in person or remotely. And then we will close that, then we will deliberate, share ideas, and then we will make a recommendation, either for approval or denial. So with that, we'll let Kerry present. Thank you, Kerry.
Thank you, Chair, members of the commission. So this is the zoning ordinance amendment. This is the one that's been recommended by the city attorney. We have a conflict in our city code, and these are the two regulations that are in conflict. On the right-hand side, you can see that in the PCD zoning districts, specifically PCD1 and 2, multi-residential uses are a conditionally permitted use. Multi-residential uses are defined as double-dwelling units, residential townhomes, residential buildings containing six or fewer dwelling units, and residential buildings. These types of structures typically don't have residential, or have commercial on the first floor. So under this provision of the code, the city has approved a couple of projects through a conditional use permit, review by planning commission, recommendation, and went to the city council. That's the Edina Flats project and the View 44. We also have another section in the code that states that no part of any dwelling unit shall be located in the basement or first story of a PCD1 or PCD2 district. So the goal of all of this is to make it clear, one way or the other, whether we're going to require retail on the first level and basement within the PCD1 and 2 zoning district, or allow freestanding multi-residential uses. So with this first graphic just highlights the areas where we have PCD1 and PCD2 zoning districts, primarily within our neighborhood nodes, but there are a couple within the Southdale District and within that Cahill District. So there's two options before the planning commission this evening. Option A would allow multifamily residential uses as a conditionally permitted use. Option B is that we clearly state that commercial uses in the basement and first floor are required in those two zoning districts. I won't go through this in detail because we did this the last time that we considered this. Within the comprehensive plan, there's a lot of supporting statements and maps and graphics that allow multi-residential uses as a freestanding use within those nodes, and I'll just hit on a couple of them quickly. The Valley View-Wooddale Small Area Plan states that one of the guiding principles for the district, sites should be allowed to transition to housing from business use in response to changing market demands. Within that plan, the picture that you're seeing, while this wasn't exactly what was approved for that site, it is a standalone residential building that was contemplated on the Burley site. 50th and France, within that small area plan, the yellow areas are highlighted as residential development. The red areas are mixed use. 44th and France, similar, the potential renderings of what could happen in that district does show standalone multi-residential. 70th and Cahill Plan does talk about the uses allowed being residential or mixed-use buildings. So the options for consideration, option A, as we discussed this evening, again, would allow multi-residential uses as a standalone use, through a conditional use permit. Option B is to specifically require commercial, or the uses that are allowed in the PCD1, PCD2, primarily retail, office-type uses, need to be on the first level and basement of any residential use within that district. Based on some of the discussion that we had at the last meeting, concern that the planning commission had, and staff believes this now, too, after that discussion, in allowing multi-residential uses as a conditional use in that district, we may tend to, over time, lose our retail uses. So because of that, staff is recommending option B this evening, and that is to specifically require any multi-residential use, would have to have that commercial-type use on the first floor. So with that, I can stand for any questions you may have, and again, the city attorney, Dave Kendall, is on the line as well.
Kerry, can you just touch on why we're doing this again tonight, just so people are aware?
Yeah, so it comes from that part of the Edina Flats development, the Burley site that I referred to, the old hair salon. Part of that Edina Flats project, originally, they received a conditional use permit for that entire development, but that one site on the corner didn't develop as was proposed, so they came back through the process, did an amendment, and four new housing units were approved for that site, and so that's when this issue came to light, that we've got this conflict in the code. So based on that, the city attorney has recommended that we need to, we need to make the code clear, so we don't have that conflict in the future.
And we had a conversation about this before, but it wasn't properly noticed, right, to make a decision that evening?
Right, we didn't notice both options the last time, so this time we have.
Okay. Turn it over to, yeah, Jerry, thanks for the, watch the video.
Okay. Director Teague, yeah, the screen that you have up is, so option B, highlighted part, as long as no part of the dwelling may be located. So what you're saying is that there would be a residential use to the building, but not in the basement or in the first floor, wouldn't. So that, there is no other use for that space then, if, I mean, they have no, they have no other options or avenues to pursue doing a residential, I mean, under option B. That's what we're saying is?
Correct. The other option would be to rezone to a different zoning district?
Okay, that whole process, right? I mean, okay. Versus option A, there's a pathway to do it, which is by the use of the...
Right, which is a much easier pathway, being it's a conditionally permitted use. The use is allowed, the city can put certain conditions on it. Yeah.
Okay, that's, I mean, thank you.
So the way the code reads currently, if you look over here, and option B is PCD1 and PCD2 district, multi-residential use is subject to the following, and that's what I didn't include on the screen, it's the affordable housing policy, just to simplify it, to make it easier to see here. So the language that's highlighted, that would be the added text, so it's clear.
I have a question, I guess either for you, Kerry, or for the city attorney. Is there any concern around trying to, I guess, get around the way this is worded in terms of basement or first story, right? You know, we have, you can have a building that has multiple stories, and that's essentially beneath below ground. I think what we're trying to accomplish is we want things on street level, right? For the most part, we want commercial on the street level. So I wonder if there's, you know, thought around if this needs to be reworded in a way to avoid that, or if we thought that that might be an issue going forward, you know, such as, you can locate something in a basement, but now your first story can be residential, because it says basement or first story, right, now, rather than and/or. So, I don't know, just curious on thoughts about that.
No part of any dwelling unit be located in a basement or first story. I think we're covered. I could ask Dave if he has any thoughts on that?
I think the language is pretty clear to me, you know, as far as the or being there, it looks to me like that would be pretty clear, that you are not to have those uses on either the basement or the first floor. You know, it's certainly possible someone could try to get around it, but the plain language is pretty clear. I think the plain language would prevail. If there was some kind of lawsuit about it, I think a judge would understand that language and would be able to apply it the way it was intended, so I'm fairly comfortable with it.
Okay, yeah, I just, you know, something that I thought of as I read that passage, and I don't deal in litigation, I'm just a lowly engineer, so I thought I'd ask for the legal opinion on the matter.
Great, great question. Commissioner Padilla.
Yeah, I'm hearing you discuss retail and commercial, but commercial is a bigger bucket, right? So we're talking about commercial use.
Yeah, so it's the uses that are listed as permitted uses in the PCD1 and PCD2 districts, and it's a long list, I'm generalizing.
Right, but it does go beyond retail?
Yes.
Okay, I wanted to confirm that. So you could have a multi-residential use that doesn't have a dwelling on the first floor or the basement, but it has, it doesn't have commercial either, right? You could have a gym there and an office and things like that, or not.
If that's listed as a permitted use in those districts, yeah, so the specific use, you still need a conditional use permit, so it's still coming before planning commission and city council, so it's one of those, you know, we can have that discussion, assuming it's fitting into that PCD, PCD allowed use categories.
Okay, thank you. And I would also like to hear from the city attorney why he believes option B to be the recommended option, if we could hear from Attorney Kendall.
Chair Commissioners, that was just in response to some of the comments at the last hearing, and I think the general intent, it seems as though, I mean, right now, the ordinance is conflicting, but it seems as though at least part of the intent was to try to require that commercial or retail on the first floor of buildings, presumably large multifamily buildings, like apartments or condos, you're not going to obviously have retail on the first floor of a townhouse. So it seems like there's some conflict there, but the general idea seemed to be to try to require retail and commercial on the first floor of larger multifamily buildings. That seemed to be the overarching intent, so that was the interpretation that staff chose to recommend. If you disagree with that, of course, you can always choose the other interpretation, which actually was the previous interpretation in the past, but it seems like there was some interest and desire to try to preserve that goal of having retail and commercial on the first floor of these buildings, so that's why staff recommended that option.
Thanks very much.
Commissioner Felton.
Can we go back to that small area plan map that you had? Yeah, that one. So these are all pockets of change, or places of change within the city of Edina. So we've said that these, we have to look at their zoning and do, we've done small area plans on most of them. I think there's just two that there's not a small area plan on. Is that correct?
As I look at, yes, yeah, it's this Lincoln Drive area that was referred to earlier, and then 54th and France.
And so if we, so, once again, I asked this question last time, but I'm going to say it again. So the intent, we have zoning guidelines for the city. Zoning guidelines take a long time to change. Market forces have changed some of our neighborhood nodes, so we do these comprehensive, or these comprehensive plans and small area plans, so we can work with the communities on what may be wanted there. Is that correct?
Yes, yeah, that's fair.
Okay. And Wooddale and Valley View, we did one of these, and you showed one of the images where it had a duplex at that, a couple of townhomes at that beginning corner. And so Wooddale and Valley View, there were three flats, Edina 44, and then one across the street that had been approved recently, and now there's only like two parcels that are left, PCD1?
So there's two projects where the city issued a conditional use permit for an all-housing project, those two sites, the Edina Flats and View 44.
Okay. And then in the remainder of Wooddale and Valley View, there is the site with Snuffy's and Petisserie Margaux, and that's considered PCD1, right?
Correct.
And is there, there's an, oh, the one right across the street on the northeast corner is considered PCD1?
That's right.
So if we go with option B tonight, it would protect those two sites from having residential, large residential projects built on there. It would protect those two sites in this area, so there would be like a mixed use or commercial on the first floor, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And, yeah, I think that's, those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to thank Director Teague for bringing this back to us. I think this is such an important item. Jimmy, I have a lot of questions, I don't know if you want to cut me off, but I have like quite a few. So I'll just kind of start going on a list, and hopefully we could engage in some dialogue as we go along here. But for me, what I'm trying to get to is more the whole process idea. When I think about, you know, PCD and CUP, it's really about having an option, right? CUP gives us the option. So I'll kind of start.
option, right? CUP gives us the option. So I'll kind of start, so tell us just a bit about just the history, or, you know, the reason why we have a conditional use option in our zoning laws.
Yeah, so when that ordinance came through, it was before my time, but it was, I believe it was at the time when the 50th and France, the apartments that are there now above the retail, decision around that time was made by the city council to allow multi-residential uses within those commercial nodes. So it not only impacted 50th and France, the Seltail area, anywhere where there's a PCD-1, 2, or 3.
Was the question more general in nature of just why CUPs exist in zoning?
Yeah.
I think that's what.
Oh, yeah, it was to allow that use through a conditional use permit. So a conditional use permit is a use that's allowed, subject to, the city can put certain conditions, and then there's criteria that has to be met. As long as that criteria is met, the city's obligated to approve that use. And that was some of the discussion that we had the last time. If we chose option A, that use, it's allowed under certain conditions.
Gotcha.
Maybe just one thing to add to, from what we've learned about the history of Edina, we tend to not use conditional use permits as much as other cities. And it's something when we all go through training, that we are kind of advised against handing those out. So they aren't really advised to go for, right? And it might get to your other point, but as Commissioner Boroncino is not here, I think his whole point with this, just first and foremost, in a PCD, the goal is to expressly support and house commercial uses, right? So that, like, that's what we should do there. We just have this complication with zoning doesn't necessarily match our comprehensive plan either, where there could be some resolution there that might allow for some of that ambiguity.
Well, it's the code where we, it's the zoning ordinance where we need to be specific.
Yeah. Sorry.
Okay, I'll keep going. Next question is, you know, at a high level, what is the process for obtaining a CUP approval, you would say?
Applications need to be made at least 30 days in advance. Public hearings held both at planning commission and city council, submission 30 days in advance of the planning commission meeting, brought to you on your agenda. You hold a public meeting, make recommendation to the city council, and then they make the final decision. About a two-month process.
And I think too, part of that process is that the CUP has to meet about five different requirements and have a three-fifths vote on the city council for it to be approved.
Correct.
And if I'm not mistaken, so as a planning commission, what we could do is make a recommendation that a CUP might be necessary, and then the city council then go through that five-point checklist of, does it increase traffic? Does it have an adverse effect on services? And I think there's a list of them, and still have a three-fifths majority vote before CUP is granted, correct?
Correct, yeah. We're not, the choices between you, under either scenario, conditional use permit is still required.
Yeah, and this is why I bring that up, is just trying to understand the difficulty or how thorough getting a CUP is as compared to a zoning change. What would you say is the process to make a change to zoning? If the city council had to make a zoning change, what would that process look like?
Yeah, process is the same, except there's an added step, that first step that I described for the CUP. That's the preliminary rezoning. There's one more step with the rezoning. They have to come back to the city council for final rezoning. With, so a conditional use permit is much easier to obtain. If you meet those conditions, city has to approve it. With a rezoning, if you remember our pyramid of discretion, the rezoning is down at the bottom, where the city has complete discretion to say yes or no.
Okay, so if, for example, we decide to go with the option where we do not want to have a conditional use that would allow residential on the first floor or basement, but then could the city council then override that essentially and make that possible after we make that determination tonight?
City council makes final decision. They're using your recommendation as an advisement, but they can, they can go a different direction.
Gotcha. So for the city council, we could make the recommendation that we should go with B, but then they could say that they would go with A, essentially.
They could.
Now, if we do decide to go with B, and let's just say that they also agree with B, could they then, when an actual case comes up, rezone that area to allow residential on the first floor?
They could.
And what process?
They choose a different zoning district, so it's no longer a PCD, but a rezoning, anybody can ask for a rezoning, doesn't mean you're obliged to approve it.
Gotcha. So the process for a CUP, and the process for city council to rezone, is that essentially the same thing?
It's, public hearings held at planning commission and city council with the recommendation by you, yes. Conditional use permits, again, easier to obtain than a rezoning.
Because there's one additional step.
Not because of the step, because you're changing the use on the property, you're changing the zoning. If, if, if the council with the recommendation of the planning commission feels that's not in the best interest of the city, they can say no to that. But if a, if they, sorry, go ahead, Dave.
Well, I just wanted to kind of echo what you're saying here. The difference is the level of discretion that the city has when that application comes up. An application for rezoning, the city has almost complete discretion. They can deny it for any reason they want, basically, and the applicant has to live with that decision. On a conditional use permit, it's almost the opposite situation. If the applicant meets the standards in the ordinance, the city more or less has to grant that. I mean, the city can impose conditions, but the city doesn't have discretion to deny it. It's very difficult to deny if they meet the requirements, the city must grant it. So the process might be the same, but the level of discretion and the options for the city are quite different.
I guess where I'm going with this is, when you're talking about meet the requirements of the CUP, I think you're assuming that the CUP has been approved, and we have given the developer, here's the requirements that I want you to meet. What I'm asking is, what are these steps in order to grant the CUP in the first place without adding all those requirements in? At what point does the developer say, hey, this is zoned for PCD-1, I need a conditional use permit to give me the option of building here?
I'm not sure I'm following that question.
I'm trying to figure out which one comes first, getting the, meeting those guidelines to get a CUP approved, or meeting the conditions in the CUP after we've approved it, that would then give the developer the option, well, the ability just to build, essentially. I'm trying to get a sense of what comes first.
Under no circumstance can they just build. They have to come through planning commission and city council with a conditional use permit or a rezoning. So if they have an idea for a conditional use permit, they're going to take a look at the code, make a determination if they believe they meet those criteria, meet with staff, and decide whether they want to proceed.
So hypothetically, someone goes for a building permit to build something. It would be in the, basically, the planning department would be like, hey, hold on, you're, you're trying to build an all-residential use on a commercial district, and then that would flag it, then they wouldn't be able to build that. They would have to go through the process as described, either rezone it or go through a PCD, depending on, at least in that example, which option we elect to support.
So what we're saying is that if they want to build residential in a commercially zoned area, residential on the first floor, and we flag it as a planning department, then it'll have to go through the process, right? What option B is saying that there will be no process?
No.
No, no, option B is saying they could still try to do that. Now, they don't, they don't have an option for a PCD, or they don't have an option for a CUP. They only have an option for rezoning. So that they, you, you couldn't put residential use in the ground level or the basement in a PCD unless you went to rezone it now.
Gotcha.
Which, which makes it extra harder to, to gain that approval.
Gotcha, okay, that makes sense. So they have to go through a rezoning, and, okay, and the process for rezoning is a little bit more difficult than the process to grant a CUP?
Well, it's also, as we said, in the pyramid of discretion, we have the most discretion for rezoning rather than a conditional use permit, right? Conditional use permit is kind of in the middle of that pyramid of discretion, right? There's, like I said, if they meet the requirements, can simply flat out just say, no, no, we just don't want it here, right? If you apply for rezoning, we can deny, deny it for any reason, right? So the barrier is much different for these two options to our developers.
Yeah, what I'm trying to really boil down to is, I guess the simple phrasing is, what difference would it make if we go with option A versus option B if the city could still override that and rezone that property to allow commercial, I mean residential on the first level?
That is the difference. You'd have to rezone it versus just have a conditional use permit. That's the difference. So option B just provides that extra level of protection. I think, I mean, it's a good, it's too bad that a situation brings, like, brings to light this ambiguity in our code, but it's good that we're addressing this, because, again, our goal should be to not use conditional use permits as much. And we've done a good job as a city of Edina to not do that. By correcting the code and taking ambiguity out and making it harder for someone to do something that's plausible, that doesn't align with our goals, then it directs people away from a conditional use permit by nature. So it feels like regardless of what we do, option B helps prevent this from being a common process, which has happened on two, two things in small area plan, or small areas.
Yeah, certainly, maybe get to the comments. I could add some, some other comments on that. Just a couple more questions, I guess, for me. And this is kind of an interesting one, but from a tax revenue perspective, right? And I don't know if you would know this, but from a tax base perspective, right, which option generates better revenues for the city? Is it a residential type property, or would it be a commercial type property? Just hypothetically.
Since we're only talking about the first level, I think the difference is going to be, in the grand scheme of the tax base for the city, it's really minuscule. In general, multifamily housing is going to generate more tax than a commercial use, just generally speaking.
Gotcha. And from a, there's a term called graceful transition, you know, graceful transition from, let's just say, a PCD-1 or 2 to R-1, let's just say, you know, from commercial to residential. What does graceful transition mean to the city?
So that was part of, go back to the Burley site, was commercial, commercial right next to residential. Generally, it's a higher intense use. The thinking was having four townhomes there is a more graceful transition into the commercial district. Could be similarity in height, you know, it's, height is gradually increasing as you move away from a residential area. Could be how much landscaping is provided. So it means a whole, whole lot of different things.
Some history to that, too. So, I mean, there's, you can think of Minneapolis where you have lots of single-family homes right next to a commercial use, and it's common. At least in Edina and other communities, there's an expectation of like a buffer. And you can look to the history of Edina, there are a lot of, I mean, if you look around, even from a residential intensity, there's a lot of examples of where you have duplexes, you know, buffering a busier corridor or close to a commercial district before you get to single-family. So there is this, this, this form and this use history of these transitions from one use to another, from like an intensity as well as shape, like, I mean duplexes can look the same, but at least you have more people there. So in a similar way, these small area plans, 44 or 44th and France, we use that term too, graceful transitions, because a lot of neighbors, you know, if someone buys their neighbor's property, they don't want to see a commercial use now just appear right next to them. They would still expect that graceful transition, and then you'd have to go through rezoning, but maybe that, maybe they did have PCD next to them, and maybe a residential is a better buffer, and that was kind of what Wooddale Valley View was guiding. And that's where there is some conflict even in the decision we make tonight, is that Burley site, some people thought it was better to have residential fill there with more intensity as you get to that small area, but others really want to preserve that ground level commercial use. So that, that's kind of what we're addressing tonight, and if you look at this graph, and Commissioner Boroncino brought it up last time, we're not talking about a lot of places and a lot of sites that we have PCD-1 or PCD-2, and they're in these small commercial neighborhood nodes. So it would make sense, in his opinion and others as we were discussing, to try to protect that character versus let that erode. You still could apply for rezoning. So you still could do that, it just makes it harder. So I don't know if that helps fill some gaps.
Yeah, I think so. I think there's also a height component. If a PCD-1 abuts R-1, there should be a height limitation from the first residential property, I guess, so that might limit the height to like two stories to some degree in most cases.
That's in the code, so that, that wouldn't apply to what we're looking at here, but that's, that's regulated as well.
I guess last one for now. If a property is, I guess, on the, you know, if we do a conditional use permit that allowed residential on the first floor, I'm guessing we, it would be very difficult down the road to convert that back into commercial. Or is that completely out of the question? And it kind of came up, which is, if we allow residential in a PCD area, is that even possible to convert that back into commercial?
I suppose it would be possible. Not likely, say, if it's a duplex, you know, you think of the, the townhomes that are going to be built there at the Burley site. Not likely those would be turned into commercial. Because there's a whole different set of regulations that goes in. They need to park it, provide parking for the square footage within that building, so highly unlikely.
So it's fair to say that if we ever build a residential in a commercial district, it's pretty much gone, the commercial district is pretty much gone at that point?
Well, if the PCD zoning is still in place, they could tear that multi-residential structure down and propose something new. They need to conform again to other regulations, parking, landscaping, those kinds of things.
Gotcha.
And there's, I mean, there's examples, like in Minneapolis, of homes that are restaurants on the, you know, main level, and they keep a use. I mean, it can happen depending where you're at. It just, it depends a lot on what ends up getting built there.
All right, that's all the questions I have for now.
Are there questions? Okay, well, let's open this up for a public hearing. So we will begin with those who are here in person, and you can, I'll let you gather and take your time, but in the meantime, I'm going to remind those who might be tuning in remotely, if you would like to participate in this public hearing, please call 786-496-5601, enter conference PIN. public hearing, please call 786-496-5601, enter conference PIN 5347981, pound, and then press star one to get in the queue to speak. Once we wrap up the in-person public hearing, we will look to our virtual waiting room to see if you're there, and we will allow you three minutes to speak, too. So just hold tight. And with that, we'll turn it over to a resident here.
Good evening. Janie Weston, 6136 Brookview Avenue. I hope you all remember a few months ago when I handed all of you paper copies, two pages of section 36-612, so you could read it word for word. And it says nothing. I hope you all did read it. It says nothing that allows a conditional use of basement and first floor residential living. This is driving me nuts, hearing this discussion. And I hope Attorney Kendall, I handed him two pages, too, and I hope he read it thoroughly. It does not give an allowance to do that. With that said, option A is just plain incorrect. Living, you still can't do residential living at the basement and ground floor with option A, period. It's plain language, if you want to use the term I just heard. The plain language does not say you can do that. So let's just not do option A. I don't see a conflict here either. The city code is quite clear. If people read through and see what it says and see what it is not saying, and option B, fine, at least it puts out there that clarifies what the code says by reminding you, if they add the wording, in 612 for conditional use, it reminds you what the 36-618 already tells you. So I live a block, a short block away from the Burley site. Has anyone driven past it today or yesterday? That is not a graceful transition. It is absolutely not. The foundation walls have been poured for the east duplex unit, and it is astoundingly huge for the size of that lot. I just want you to go take a look at it. What was there previously? A small gas station-sized building with parking lot and lots of nice landscaping around it. Actually, they did a pretty nice job. That was actually a much more gentle transition than what's being built right now. And I'd really like to know, is the city going to inform the people that live on the first floor of U44 apartments and the city flats that are built and now occupied? Are they ever going to be formally informed that they are living on the first floor? Or maybe, well, future Burley's people outside of what city code says is allowed? Legally, I think the city is obligated to at least inform them. And your only option here is B. And frankly, this shouldn't even be happening like this, because the code was already clear. It has been followed with the Lorient at 44th and France. It's been followed with the Market Street development at 50th and France. Nobody had any problems doing those developments with commercial on the first floor. So why did it happen in my local neighborhood with city flats, U44, and now Burley's? The only thing that I can think of for why they happened is because the setbacks for a PRD residential district building is different than PCD one and two. And it allowed, I know, I know, I'm running out of time, but it did allow closer to the street. So I'm not happy with how this has all come down. And I don't want to see PCD one and two being given conditional use, because there is no conditional use that allows the residential at basement and ground floor. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else who's here in person that would like to testify, provide a testimony? If so, please come up. Seeing none, we will turn to those who might be tuning in remotely. Do we have anyone in the queue or in the waiting room?
Yes, we have two people waiting to speak, and they both have indicated that they would like to speak.
Great.
So operator, can you please unmute the line of the first caller? And just a reminder to the caller to please state your full name and address. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kent Kramer. I'm at 5713 Parkwood Lane in Edina. And I'm just curious if it might make sense to further strengthen the language in, I believe it's option B, relative to commercial and retail spaces on the first floor of a building as opposed to housing, specifically as it relates to a potential building developer or owner deciding to kind of get around that by having a captive gym or captive lobby or captive restaurant kind of a, or cafeteria kind of a thing for, primarily directed towards the residents of the building as opposed to the more retail concept, which I think is what you guys are getting at. You know, by adding a sentence or two, that might help to further define what that space is used for, as opposed to allowing a builder or developer to get around it in the future. And thank you so much for letting me participate.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Operator, can you please unmute the line of our second caller? And just a reminder to the caller to please state your full name and address. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. My name is Daniel Eaton, and I'm at 5712 Parkwood Lane. And just wanted to, again, reinforce and restate the first, the first person who went up and talked about this. I think this is a really good example of what happens or what can happen when we're not really taking the existing code very seriously, or at least it's somehow misinterpreted. I think this meeting, it's a good meeting to make sure that we get it right and make sure that the future, we get it right. But I think, I just wanted to continue to reiterate, I see this planning commission as being a really important body for this city to make sure that our city council does the right thing by long-term standards of planning and long-term planning to make sure that our cities stay the really livable and great place to live long-term and doesn't become a developer-led planned city. I think that's the number one thing that I'm concerned about with Edina long-term. And I think strengthening some of these definitions, option B, number one, that's the only thing that we should be talking about today. Again, option B is what everybody who lives in Edina believes that it should be. But I also think strengthening that language, like my neighbor just said, strengthening some of the intentions behind that commercial on the first, on the basement and first floor, making sure developers can't get around it by putting a parking ramp on the first floor or doing something, again, to end around it. Because part of what we do want in Edina is we want more livability. We want more services, we want more places to walk to with our kids. And every building, every lot that we build, 100% residential, that used to allow for some sort of commercial, like one of the, one of the people on this, on this panel said it well, it's gone forever or a really long time. Because the reality is, nobody's tearing these buildings down right away. They're going to be up for 30, 40, 50 years. So let's make sure that this gets done, again, in the right way, that language is strengthened. We can't end around it. And again, just want to say a really big thank you to this body, to the deliberate questions that were being asked. It's very clear that I believe many of you on this body want to make sure that zoning in Edina gets upheld and that it's really difficult to change it. Because as a resident of Edina, if we don't have strong zoning laws, what protection do we have of our investment in this community? Because any developer from outside of community can come in immediately and get changes that could be very detrimental to my quality of life or my neighbor's quality of life. So having these very intentional defined pieces is critically important. So thank you again for the work you're doing. Thank you for the decision that you're going to make tonight. It sounds like everything is going in sort of the direction of option B. But again, just want to reaffirm, option B with some additional strengthening of that language would be great. And I think the other piece to remember is the graceful transitions need to be, that language needs to be better defined. So I would, again, encourage option B vote tonight, but also let's come back and let's define some of these terms that might be a little bit more nebulous to make sure that there's no ambiguity within these terms. Again, we are a planning and neighborhood planned community, not a developer planned community of the future. Thank you again, everybody who's on this panel. Thank you for your work. You guys put in a lot of long hours. I don't envy this job, but we appreciate the work that you do.
Thank you. Really appreciate the comments there. Do we have anyone else in the waiting room?
No, we do not.
It's been well over a minute, so.
Yeah, I think we're safe to proceed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Welcome, motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moves, the public hearing is closed. Thank you, everyone who was tuning in and participated. Again, your, your feedback is instrumental here. Maybe on the note of that, we could turn it back to Carrie to kind of address some of the comments that were brought up. Specifically, thank you for providing us the printout of those two codes. And again, I feel like we're here to rectify the ambiguity between those, because as I read 612, that's all about the conditional uses, one of which is multi-residential, and it stipulates you can do a lot of residential stuff. 61 made a different piece of code that says no, no residential in the basement in the ground level. So because they're different is why there's been this conflict, because a conditional use is 612 and 618 is, what was it called? You know, special requirements. So those aren't the same, they're not in the same list of items that apply to each other. So could you speak to that, too? I mean, is that, that's ultimately what we're here to rectify, right?
That is exactly why we're here. So that's all well said. In terms of those existing uses out there, they would, assuming we're going to go with option B and that's what the council chooses, those become legal existing non-conforming uses, so they can continue to operate as-is. In regard to the second caller's suggestion, I think, I think they're good ones. What I might suggest, and this is just for discussion, and I just, and Dave Kendall, if he has any other ideas, could chime in as well, but we could add to multi-residential uses as long as no part of any dwelling unit be located in a basement or on the first story of the building, period. First-level and basement uses within a multi-residential use must be permitted uses in the PCD one and two zoning districts. So then it's clear that it's a use that's specifically listed in the retail district. So just food for thought, for consideration.
Can I further ask a question about that? I think there was also the concern that they could get around it by having allowable uses in the PCD district but are only reserved for their residents, right? So is there an element here, anything, I guess, language that needs to be added around public use rather than private use for any reason?
Yeah, we could add that language as well. When they're in for a conditional use for whatever they're proposing, you could put a specific condition on that conditional use permit saying that retail or office or whatever the use is has to be available to the public. Could be done both ways.
But if they're not going through a CUP process, right, they're just going through a standard approval for PCD one, right? We don't have, we can't put a condition on, I mean, they could say, we're going to open a restaurant right now for, open to the public, but then five years from then, they could say, no, actually, it's only for the people inside, right? There's nothing that would prevent them from doing that.
If it's, so if it's a multi-residential use, they do have to come in for a conditional use permit, even if there's the retail on the first level. So we could write something like you're talking about into the code. And it can also be put on an, on that conditional use permit for that property, so they couldn't turn that use, whatever it is, into a use for the apartments above, because we've, they'd be in violation of their conditional use permit.
What's an example of such a thing that you're thinking of? I don't know if it's worth stipulating that in this.
Only addressing hypotheticals, I can't think of it.
Yeah, no, no.
The only one I can think of was that restaurant in the 510 building that opened up to the public because they could not afford to be just for the building. There were a few restaurants in the 510 building in downtown Minneapolis.
I guess I just look at, well, I mean, maybe that is something to consider.
And I don't know if I would do it tonight. I mean, I think it's, it's kind of a part of each project that comes forward. You know, because I, I think tonight, the language is just about these two that we've been thinking about.
Well, yeah, I think Carrie said it well, too. I mean, it's, he further stipulated that it has to be a permitted use. So I mean, it, could you, right, I mean, if you had a lobby to a residential above, I mean, that's, that's not a permitted use.
Correct, yeah. So the, the point that's been made is a valid one. Someone might argue that they could create something, yeah, just a plain lobby on the first floor.
For example, a daycare, just for their residents, right, on the first floor. That's a permitted use in PCD one district, right? So we'd have to specifically put a conditional, or a condition on their application that says that has to be open to the public all the time, or they can get around it.
Yeah, I feel like, I don't know, that hypothetical's like, it just wouldn't happen, right? It's, it's a good point, it's just, I would hesitate to have something not go through by us going down that road. But again, to be clear, what we're talking about in both cases is when a PCD, or a, sorry, a conditional use permit is being applied for. So to one of the residents who spoke, if someone has a PCD one or two property and they want to do something there, they are required by code to not have residential on the first or basement level. Like, that's how the code is. Now, if they want to have residential, they have to have basically a conditional use permit. And now we're clarifying that same thing applies.
Correct.
Yeah, because as we've read into it and as the council has supported it, it has overrode 618, basically. I think there's a lot of side conversations that come into zoning that have come up with this and as well that touch the comprehensive plan, but that might, we should reserve that for another evening. But it all applies, planning matters here. Anyone else have questions or comments?
And just to be clear, this is PCD one or PCD two. Because when you look at the zoning map in some of these areas, you can see, and what's nice about the zoning map online is it has all these areas of change broken out, so you can easily read what the zoning is currently in some of these small areas. Right? The PCD one and PCD two is that bright red or the diagonal red. red or the diagonal red. And over at 5780 Lincoln, Planned Industrial, PID, over there. And I know, but 44th and France, there's Plan Unit Development, PCD 1, and a Planned Office. But in Valley View, Valley View and Wooddale specifically, it was PCD 1, and there's just two remaining lots that are PCD 1. One, I don't think is going to be developed for a while because it's a pretty new building.
Yeah, just to ask a couple of questions there. Just two, really. The first one is, if we had to rezone, someone wants to put a residential on the first floor, and it's not allowed, let's just say, right, with a conditional use permit, what other rezoning, what would you, what, what zone would be put that property in to allow that to happen?
Be like a PRD or depending on size, PUD.
Correct.
PRD, okay.
Yeah, depending on the size, 1, 2.
Gotcha. Or a PUD. That'd be the same thing.
Like, well, that, that would allow like more of.
More flexibility.
Well, yeah, more multi-use.
Mm-hmm. Gotcha. Yeah, that's it. Thanks.
Commissioner Day?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I guess, address the comment by Ms. Weston about the conditional uses that are permitted in PCD 1 sub-district. And I feel like I understand this well, but I think we should cover this. Right? So we have a list in 612 of what the conditional uses permitted in the PCD 1 sub-district are. We say, you know, multi-residential use is subject to the following. Now, to clarify for our audience, right, that when we say subject to the following, it doesn't mean that they have to meet every single requirement listed A through whatever here, right, A through K. Right? These are requirements, you know, that we can put on these conditional uses, but they don't have to meet every single one of these things, correct?
Correct. Yeah, those standards are essentially the affordable housing policy.
And really, I mean, so there's nothing in here that says you're allowed to have housing on the first floor basement, but there is nothing in here that says that you cannot, correct? Right? It's in terms of how that conditional use is, is listed out in the ordinance, right?
Right.
So I think, now, I waited until this meeting, but that was a sticking point and say, you know, we've been repeatedly said that first floor residential and basement are not allowed by 612, but that's not true here from a legal standpoint, right? I mean, there's, there's no really ambiguity around that. You can have residential on the first floor in the basement here as listed by these conditional uses.
Because it doesn't.
Because it says multi-residential, and it doesn't exclude those uses in the conditional use list, right? Okay. So I just wanted to make that clear because, right, I didn't want it to say, right, that the city is, was deliberately going against their own ordinance in approving these projects from a legal standpoint, right? They didn't illegally build these units, right? They could, you can, and that's why we're trying to clear it up today, right? But there was nothing that said you couldn't. So I thought that was worth addressing real fast.
One clarifying piece, I don't know if anyone else was digging through the code and reading it, but as it begins, right, 612, you know, it says the following are the conditional uses permitted in the PCD 1 sub-district, and then it lists PCD 1 and PCD 2, and then PCD 3 beneath that. Should that just be the PCD sub-districts? Shouldn't that be clarified? Like what, right?
I was wondering about that, too.
Maybe the attorney can opine. Can we clean that up?
Yeah, it's kind of all the PCD 1, 2, 3, and 4 are all lumped into, right?
I think that'd be a good thing to clear up at a future.
Okay.
Meeting. It's not on the table before you hear it today, but I think it would be a good thing to, to clarify.
Seems like a clerical just error, so. But I think as you start reading these things, when there's clerical errors like that, it throws you off. So, I mean, that should read the PCD sub-districts. And then we get into the first one, and that's what we're talking about tonight, and we're adding the language before the subject to the following. So basically, anything like Commissioner Day said, that could apply later is subject to the fact that you can't have residential on the ground or basement level.
Yep.
That binds option A through K more clearly. I could read a bunch of comments from Commissioner Bornstein, but who's not here, but he, he shared it, and so other people know with, to Commissioner, or to Planner Teague, and then that gets distributed to all of us. And he also supports option B. Anyone else have any questions or comments or motions? And I'd remind people, Carrie offered up a modification to option B that might be worth reconsidering to add to make it a little more clear.
Can you bring the A and B up on the screen again, please? Remind me what that modification was.
Did you write that down, Carrie?
I did.
Nice.
So following the highlighted text on option B, we could add language that said, the first level and basement uses within a multi-residential use must be permitted uses in the PCD 1 and PCD 2 districts.
Can you say that again?
The first level and basement uses within a multi-residential use must be permitted uses in the PCD 1 and PCD 2 districts. I can work with the city attorney to maybe massage that a little bit, but that's the intent.
Is it redundant, though, in terms of like, because the PCD requirements already list out the uses. So if we say you can't have dwelling on the first floor basement, then we're saying, okay, then you have to have what, the primary uses that are listed out for PCD 1, 2. So I feel like that, I don't know.
Yeah, it's trying to, it's trying to cover that, you know, there's always going to be unintended consequences when we, anytime you change an ordinance, but it's trying to address that, okay, in our multi-residential use, which we're just going to have a lobby on the first level.
Yeah.
That meets the language that's on the screen. So to be clear, that you have to have that.
Yeah, you have to have permitted uses.
Yeah.
You can't have, because arguably, you don't have residential uses.
Right.
Or you don't have a dwelling unit specifically, you know, part of a dwelling unit. So I think that's important to include, because dwelling unit could mean you have a lobby on the whole first floor.
Yep.
Right? That's not what we're trying to do.
I think you can go either way on this, and it's fine to clarify it like that. I wouldn't consider if it's a private use, it's not open to the public, I wouldn't consider that one of the listed permitted uses in the PCD district because I consider it part of a residence. Like, if it's part of a condo, if it's a private dining room for the condo building, that's not a permitted use in a PCD district, in my opinion. But I understand the concern. I don't think it can hurt to be clear about it.
I mean, we're only stipulating here dwelling units as it reads, right? And there's uses associated with a multi-residential structure that don't offer much. Okay.
Can I ask a question about that? So a plan comes to us for approval in the PCD, and we look at it, and it's got retail or whatever on the ground level, and we agree to it, and they go back later. 10, 20 years down the road, times change for them. They decide to close up things on the first level. Would they, they would have to come back at that point, right?
If the zoning doesn't change, or if our codes don't change, correct?
Yeah. Yeah. So I guess I'm wondering, you know, the amendment or not, if they're bringing the plan to us, we see the plans, we see the permitted use on the ground level. If anything changes later on within that building, they'd have to come back for a revised.
They would not have to come back if, so the uses within that first floor could change, just as long as there are uses that are still listed in the PCD 1 and 2 districts. So if they're just changing the retail or office use, those don't have to come back.
Yes, they have absolute control over, they rent to this person or that person for a small business, of course. But if they decide to close down all those businesses, well, and say, say, the first floor goes empty for some reason on that building. I mean, you know, this is, this is beyond.
They couldn't change it by right to dwelling units.
Yeah.
That's, that's what we're protecting.
Yes.
Anyone have a motion or any more comments?
Well, I guess I'm.
Sure, sure.
All right.
Thank you, Jimmy. I thought we were going to go into the comments section now and then the motion.
Let's do that. Let's do that. Comments, please.
All right. So I think this is a really good item for us to look at, and I really appreciate the callers who have called in and voiced their concerns and those in attendance today to, to share their concerns and Commissioner Bornstein's comments as well. Coming into this meeting, I was just trying to think about the long-term impact of the decisions that we make as a city. And one thing that came to mind was change, right? We're in a city that would be going, would be undergoing a lot of change in the future, change due to climate change, change due to workers, you know, where they work, work from home, work in the office. We have a lot of different housing changes that are happening, and I guess our technology is also changing. So that word change is common, and when we eliminate options, it doesn't help with change, it restricts change. So I was thinking to myself, well, if we have a conditional use permit and we allow, you know, residential, it gives the city, it gives us the ability to make that happen for whatever new demands and as things change in the city, right? Who knows, right? Down the road, we might want commercial, but let's just say it's in an area where no commercial wants to go there. It's a spot that's going to be undeveloped for a long time. Then we have this option of putting commercial in that, I mean, residential into that space, and now we could have a demand met by the city with residential. Now, as we're going through the Q and A session, I was trying to compare the process to acquire a conditional use permit versus any other tools a city had in making residential on the first floor. You know, how easy is it going to be? How hard is it going to be? And from what I could tell, the conditional use permit is a much easier thing to get done versus a zoning change. And so I said, okay, well, that makes sense, because if we want to make a change to the, to how we use land, and in particular, how we put residential on the first floor, it should be something that's well thought out, well deliberated, communicated to the city, et cetera. Because we might want changes to occur before our comprehensive plan updates, for whatever reason. COVID came, for example, businesses had to change. They send workers home, and now they're struggling to get them back in the office, right? So the zoning, they might have to think about, how do I change my zoning to convert my building into a different use? The next 10 years, I don't know what's going to happen between now and 2034, right? And so we need some kind of a tool to adjust to whatever the market conditions are and the changes are. So I was thinking that the CUP is, is that tool, because obviously we use it because we thought we had to. But after the discussion, I'm thinking about preserving the commercial nodes, and if those commercial nodes go away, they're not going to come back, knowing that we have a zoning change option for the city council to, to perform, to allow residential, whether it be PRD or, I think the other one was.
PUD.
PUD. Those are zoning changes that could allow for residential if they really had to do that. So we don't have to use the conditional use option. So after thinking about it some more, I just appreciate what callers have done, et cetera, to say, you know what, as a planning commission, we should try to preserve what the original zoning has been, put into these neighborhoods, and try to preserve it as much as possible. So I'm leaning option B because that preserves it. And if we in the future had to change that for some reason where the market changes and the market forces force us to go there, then we have a tool that we could use, which is a zoning change. And so that's just some of my comments for this particular item.
Thank you for summing that up. Commissioner Padilla?
I'm going to say something quite similar. I think, you know.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I think part of our job as a planning commission is that we're kind of ground zero for blending the past, the present, and the future in terms of land use, you know, in the city. You know, as far as the past, the residents are looking to us to maintain the commitments that were made to them years ago and when they moved in. You know, in terms of, of the present, we're being asked to look at sketch plans and make changes and make recommendations for the city, and also reflective of the current dynamics, COVID being the operative one. And in terms of the future, we've got to take into account everything that the comprehensive plan has laid out as a vision for the city, as well as the pressure that is upon us for additional housing and affordable housing. So I think it's up to us to remain agile as a body in terms of looking at the options that are available to us. I, I think in that context, that option B is the better option. However, also, also within that context, I'm uneasy about maintaining kind of a commercial use commitment. I understand that we would have to look at complete rezoning in between the, the two stints of living in Edina. I lived in Minneapolis where they were erecting big, beautiful apartment buildings, and they were renting them out, $3,000 for a one-bedroom, $3,000 a month for a one-bedroom. And they were rented so fast, and people couldn't move in fast enough. First floor was all retail, just stayed empty. You know, and I, I mean, I certainly don't want to see that here. So I think, again, the word that comes to my mind is agility, you know, in terms of that we have to be able to move and respond to the, the market dynamics. So I will support option B, knowing that we have other zoning options for those times when they might come into play.
And one of the other things is climate change. I know, I really appreciate that I can go for days without getting in my car if I need to. I mean, I happen to live in Morningside, and I can get groceries from four different grocery stores within walking distance, which doesn't happen everywhere. I can do dry cleaning, oh, five farmer's markets, six in the summer. So I think the ability or our saying that we feel strongly that the first floor should be commercial uses to help strengthen some of these nodes, I think will give the message. And of course, people can come and ask for something else they want, but it sends a message that we think these commercial nodes are important. And I think the commercial nodes can really kind of help keep communities kind of together and make it a little easier not to have to drive. and make it a little easier not to have to drive long distances. So I, I'm, I'm in favor of B, too.
Any other comments over there? Commissioner Day?
I guess the only thing I'd have to add is the, maybe a word of caution around, you know, we, we talk about changing market demands and being flexible a lot, and I worry about where that leads us down. Like, we need to, as a body, right, in terms of responding to changing market demands, use zoning as a tool. And to me, this would be undermining our zoning if we went with option A, right? Because we've essentially made it a free-for-all now. Like, a planned commercial district, we're saying, well, now you don't actually have to have commercial uses in a planned commercial district, right? Our greatest tool should be zoning. We use plan unit developments a lot. That's been hammered to us by, you know, residents that disagree with that, but zoning is our tool as we respond to changing market forces and stuff. But I don't want to see us to start, you know, changing our, the way our ordinances are written to allow anything goes, because I think we open a Pandora's box when that occurs. You know, you'll see, we don't write ordinances in place to address only what we think is likely, right? We, we put them in place to address things that we can't foresee in the future. And zoning helps protect us. You know, I think just in our last meeting, right, our developer over here in Grandview, like, they probably wouldn't have put a commercial use in there unless we had requested it and asked for that, right? And you probably would see that all over the place. And I think, you know, people would say, well, they'd have to come for a conditional use permit, and it probably wouldn't be allowed, it isn't a PCD, but, you know, people, developers are already trying to push it, right? If they're going to try to gain maximum return on their investment by putting residential units on every floor that they can, right, we want to preserve these communities. Zoning is our tool, right? And I don't want to undermine it by just because we think the market's changing rapidly. It is. It just requires us to be more agile with our zoning approach, so.
Thanks, I'll just share a couple of comments. So Commissioner Bornstein summed it up well of, you know, the, the goal with option B and, and what we should think about PCD 1 and PCD 2. When you look at the map, we're not talking about everywhere in the city, we're talking about these, these critical neighborhood nodes, you know? And he used the word "critical" because there's these critical ground-level commercial uses that are permitted but also define those areas. And even historically, when you look, say, 44th and France, you know, that's sort of the streetcar node, and functioned really well at that. As automobile came in, it, maybe a lot of people drove to South Hill instead. But now things have changed and come back to, like, people would rather walk in their community and not leave. And we know that there's benefits to that. And we haven't changed the zoning in those areas, even though the times have changed, and it, and it keeps working because that zoning defines those areas still. So I think to the callers and a lot of our questions, it's good to be nimble and agile, but we, we should put our foot down with areas that define us in a good way, that we don't want to see change. And if it makes it harder for that change, you still can, you could still do it. There's tools. They're just harder to achieve and protect our residents. And I think we're, it seems like we're all on the same page. If you're going to weigh between the two, B kind of tips in favor, but just want to say thank you. We had a lot of discussion that one night on this item, too, a lot. So there, this is a two-part thing, but thank you for everyone who's tuned in and opened it to a motion if there's no further comments.
I have a motion that we recommend the city council, that we adopt ordinance amendment B with the additional wording that Carrie proposed, you know, subject to messaging with the city attorney.
We'll, we'll do a roll call.
Commissioner Felth?
Aye.
Commissioner Padilla?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Day?
Aye.
Commissioner Strauss?
Aye.
Chair Bennett?
Aye. So the motion carries. Thank you, guys. Thank you, everyone. All right, we, we don't have anything beyond that, so we move to our next piece of the agenda, which are chair and member comments. Look to my left and right, any? All right, Commissioners, so, all right, we'll start far left, Commissioner Felth. I'm a little worried, that's a huge binder that you just opened. Maybe we'll go to Commissioners, no.
I asked for it, so I brought it in, seeing if I could, how much of a pain it is to bring in or not. I, I, we were all invited, I think I went to the, the two projects that the city engineers, along with Watershed Creek District, put together, the one down at the pool, and then the one down behind Roman Board, the little inundation area. And both those were really well-done. They are kind of planning pieces that are in, and they're things that we don't get to see, because nobody's asked for a variance, but they were beautifully designed and beautifully integrated in their sites, and I really appreciated all the effort that our city engineers, who are not here, put into that. And it was a nice piece.
All right. Just a couple of comments. One is really an acknowledgement. I just want to acknowledge all the hard work that city staff does to make us look good. And when I say city staff, the folks behind the scene who make sure our technology works properly, that we have ability to communicate online, publishing YouTube videos, just bringing us together. I just want to say, you know, thank you for the staff for doing all that work, because I know it's a lot of work, you guys. Stay up late with us and, and go tonight, and makes us look like we're doing something. So I appreciate that. In particular, I want to give Scott Denfield, Scott Denfield helped myself put together some of the videos that you guys might have seen on ADUs. Really great person, he's probably behind the scenes right now, probably going to help publish this to YouTube. Him and Addison, you know, did a really great job just coming up with some of the content that we talked about, that they communicate, helping get it into the sun current. And it's just really good work by city staff, I think, and those two folks in particular, I just want to give a shout out to. The last point I want to bring up is we are in the midst of collecting feedback, right? So as you guys know, part of our, or part of my work plan item was to work on ADUs to hopefully get over the hump this year. With all of your feedback and input, it's really going nicely, and we're at a point now where we're trying to collect as much feedback from residents as possible. And so there's a survey out on bettertoggerededa.org that I want to encourage residents and folks on this committee to send out to your neighborhoods and your colleagues and your friends, to go out there and just finish, you know, do the survey, put comments in. We seriously want to get as much as we can, so we could use that to help draft and come up with an ordinance that we think the residents would want. So I'm really trying to push that agenda to get as much feedback and survey responses as possible. So make sure and do it, and it's just going to make our lives so much richer. Thank you.
Thank you. Wonderful. Any other comments? Commissioner Day?
So I guess in, in preparation for today's meeting, one of the things I went through was the City of Edina, like, quality of life survey and stuff, and was reading, reading through that, spending time there, and I've been, you know, just really to get a feel on people's general opinion on development in the city and stuff like that, right? And it basically echoed a lot of the feedback that I've been getting from people since they found out that I've been on the planning commission. You either have, you have two camps. You have a lot of people that are telling us that we're overdeveloping the city and that there's too many apartment buildings. What can you do to stop building apartments? And then we have another group of people that say, there's not nearly enough affordable housing, there's not nearly enough alternative options to single-family housing in Edina. What are you going to do to address that? And I'm like, I wish I had better data to, to give to you, right? And so I thought about that as an engineer, I'm like, all right, well, what data do we potentially have available to us? And I don't know, but I thought I would ask at least, because I printed this out to show. This is people that are complaining about affordable housing. This is about five, six pages of, you know, people say, what's the biggest problem facing Edina right now? And this is the other hand, this says, overdevelopment, wrong type of development is affecting Edina's quality of life negatively right now. So it's like, wow, okay. So what do I do to address that sentiment? Particularly when you get feedback in here, too, about how the city does not listen to the residents, right? So, well, there's a lot of residents that have different opinions on this, so how do we get better data around this? I thought, well, okay, so in terms of affordable housing, do we have any data, data available to us in terms of, all right, we have X number of units, but how many of those units are occupied? Do we know that? Are we able to attain that data, right? Is there, like, right, constantly pushing for more, but if we don't, if ours are only 50% filled, right, that becomes a little less of a concern, right? And then as far as apartments go, apartment occupancy rates, right? We build a brand-new apartment, what's the occupancy rate of a lot of these apartment buildings? You know, are we actually filling them up, or are we just building them faster than we can really fill them, right? And I'm just trying to, again, as a thought, as I went through a lot of this feedback, how can I better communicate to people, you know, data, rather than just general feelings? Like, yes, you're right, there's too many apartments, or no, you're wrong, there's not too many apartments, we need more, right? So, I don't know, it's, that's a question that maybe can be answered now, and maybe just a thought of terms of how do we get better data around that and communicate to residents? Where other people might have seen good data to, to give people and stuff like that. I'm open to suggestions, but yeah, it's something that was, definitely came up today as I was reading through all this.
Yeah, I could respond to that. What we could do, so there, there is data out there. We have an outstanding affordable housing manager, Stephanie Hawkinson. And I think we've talked about this a little bit, but do a work session, and Stephanie can educate on vacancy rates, affordable housing, what it is, where it is, how it's working. I think we should do that sometime here in the fall.
Okay. I like that. Thank you.
Say one comment to that. I feel it's, it's part of our job, is there's always going to be tension. I mean, just like in life, and then with land use, like, there's, and we all have a collective, just a whole plethora of different, you know, expertise backgrounds, where there's times where it is going to feel right to change, and there's going to be times where it feels right to not change, and that, that is okay, you know? And it's navigating that, and that's, luckily, that the residents look to us, and I feel like I'm surrounded by people who are navigating that well, looking at the balance of both sides and making a sound decision that isn't necessarily emotional, but rooted in something true, whatever it might be, whether it's data or it's a variety of other reasons. But, I mean, that, welcome to the tension. It's, it's, it's always a balancing act up here, right? And I don't, there's been very few developments where it is just boom, the decision's that easy. Maybe for some requests, like variances or site plan reviews, something where there's just, there's not even much discretion we have, where it just favors accepting it. But then there's times where it's not, and there's always going to be something on both sides of that. And we just have to be rooted in the right documents and common vision. Anyone else have any reactions to that? All right, so a nod.
Yeah, no, this is such a good point, with Commissioner Day, his, his tension and, and what you're saying. I also feel that tension, too. You know, when I talk to residents, I have some residents that come to me and say, hey, Quincy, I don't want X. And then other folks with the same street would say, Quincy, you need to do more. So I get it. I think, I don't have any answers, but I think what matters is our approach. I think in every meeting that we have, if we continue to be very thoughtful, very deliberative, ask lots of questions, and try to see things from as much angles as possible, and do our best to help educate the public with our questions and our, and our input and the feedback, I think that's good, right? And that's going to be the best that we could do. Of course, we're going to make a decision at the end of the day, which would make some folks happy and make other folks not so happy, and vice versa. But I think a deliberative, thoughtful approach to things would do us well in the long run, that at least if folks don't get what they want, they could walk away saying, you know what, this was well reasoned, and I could appreciate where they landed. So I think that's just kind of how I've been thinking about it. Whenever I come to these meetings, is how do I probe and see things from as much size as possible? So at least when residents take a look, they, they have a good sense that we just didn't make a willingly decision, we took our time to really process it. So that's just my input.
Carrie, staff, member comments? Staff comments?
Yeah, just an update from the last city council meeting, which was actually last night. It's one of those weeks where it falls at the same week as planning commission, but on the Cahill Plan was action night for the city council, and a motion to submit the plan to the Met Council failed on a, on a two to three vote. So don't know exactly what the next steps are, but we will keep you posted on that. And the Eden 100 project that you all considered at your last meeting, the public hearing was held last night, they'll make the decision at their next meeting. And that is it for me. Oh, just a reminder, at our next, our next meeting on August 30th, we'll do a work session beforehand to go through the work plan.
And there is a seven o'clock meeting?
Yes. Yep.
Did the, did the city council share insight with the Grandview-related proposal? Or Cahill? Oh, is Cahill? No, I, okay, I must have missed that.
For which one?
The public hearing one. I know they decide, and then they usually share, like, a presentation of sorts, but usually they have questions.
Yeah, they, they ask, they ask questions, hold the public hearing, and they'll hold, they hold their decision over to the next meeting. So hard to really, you know, they seem to generally like the, the changes that were made from sketch plan to, to the formal plan, but we'll see where they go.
Thank you. I guess with that, we have one last item here. What does that say? Adjournment. Oh, hey, it's before midnight, that's nice.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so moved. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all, thank you everyone behind the scenes and those here making this happen.